I'd like to reconvene the meeting of August 13th Valley View School Board. Mr. Vinegas, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll bear with me for a second here, I'm trying to get my computer up, and in short term, Mr. Curran, why don't you lead us in the mission statement?
Our mission is to ensure that all students are prepared for college and a successful life academically, socially, and emotionally, as well as equipped with the necessary tools to have options and make decisions about their long-term goals. This will be accomplished by believing and working towards all students learning through rigorous curricula and meaningful, effective instruction, consequently demonstrating mastery on high-quality assessments with all stakeholders being held accountable throughout the process.
Thank you. At this point, we need to deviate from the agenda just for a moment to appoint a Secretary Pro Tem because we have some documents that need to be signed, so if anyone would like to volunteer or volunteer someone-
I nominate Member Campbell.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
And President Quigley?
Yes. Member Campbell, you are the Secretary Pro Tem for this evening. Moving down the agenda, Mr. Gazafi, Treasurer's Report.
Treasurer's Monthly Report for July 2012, including financial reports, balance sheets, summary of revenue and expenditures, encumbrances, and interim obligation payments totaling $3,824,134.67 are presented for your approval and action.
Motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on Treasurer's Report? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Treasurer's Action Report 5.2 is the schedule of bills for August 2012 in the amount of $2,552,665.31 for your consideration and action.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
I did skip over Agenda Item Number Four when we were doing the Secretary Pro Tem. Agenda approval and agenda revisions, is there any-
Mr. President, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the revisions of the Agenda Removing Information Item 14.1 ISAT PSAE review.
Is there a motion to accept as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Gary, Summary of Investments.
Summary of Investments. Property taxes received, the state funding update, and the school trust activity accounts are all presented for your information as prepared by our esteemed Treasurer, Joanne Borg. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or we can certainly direct them to her. She is with us this evening.
Any discussion on that? Any questions? Summary of Investments? Anyone? None? Property taxes received.
Again, an information report presented just for the information. No additional comments necessary unless you have questions.
Hearing none, seeing none. Next, state funding, or, yeah, state funding update. I can't get my computer up, so where are we at?
Okay. State funding update, we are indeed one quarter behind, one quarterly payment, just over $4 million. That exhibit was also presented in the budget. Information that will come later in the agenda. Again, I don't hold out any hope that the state will catch up in this fiscal year, but it certainly would be nice to add $4 million to our coffers, and so we continue to be, again, one quarterly payment behind.
What does IASBO have to say as far as the future, looking into the crystal ball of the finance officers?
Who is IASBO?
Thank you.
IASBO is the Illinois Association of School Business Officials. I recently served last year as past president, I mean, past president. I'm no longer serving on the Board after eight years. Their big focus certainly would be the pension issues that will be taken up this Friday in the special session. Everything that I'm led to believe, no action will be taken that will impact school districts until after the November elections, but certainly if they vote on the Senate bill that was passed in terms of changing benefits to state workers and the legislators themselves, that certainly would set the table for some type of pension reform to be addressed in November. The ramifications of that are anyone's guess. I've heard 32-year paybacks, I've heard 12-year payback phases, and it could mean anything from half a million dollars to a million dollars a year and up. And from my perspective, that's going to have a profound negative impact on not only Valley View but school districts across the state. Do, I can't sit here and say nothing needs to be done. Something needs to be done. I have my own opinions on what I feel might be a solution, but again, it's not anything that I'm hearing is part of the solution to gain control, if you will, of the pension problem.
There's a misconception that there's a lot of money in certain school accounts that school districts could draw down for pension purposes, and a lot of times those numbers are being run at the high watermark for school districts, so when the state runs a report that says there's, well, this district has $100 million in their account, and they're not paying their quote "share" of pensions, that's very disingenuous on whoever's making that report because they need to look at the low watermark to see how much money a school district has, not the high watermark. You know, when you're set with all your property taxes at the first of the year, and what's the second tax date, sometime in September, October, whatever that date is, when you're at your peak amounts, if they run those reports at that particular time, the state is also saying that school districts around the state, not just necessarily ours, but around the state, don't necessarily pay their fair portion of education into the pensions. I would suggest the state doesn't pay its fair share into education, period, let alone what the pension portions are. Our district, we do pay into our pensions, other districts do not, and those are things that have been negotiated away years and years over the length of contracts and so on and so forth, but the state of Illinois has a constitutional mandate to provide a proportionate and a larger proportion, as they say, to the education of the children of our state, and they put that burden on the taxpayers instead, and that's exactly what this will do. This will furloughen the taxpayers' burden locally, and if you're a half-district versus a half-not district, it will not help the situation. So this is just going to put us, you know, and other districts throughout the state behind the eight ball, and if you financially managed your pension funding and all your budgets properly, you're going to be punished for that, and if you haven't, well, then you're going to be punished even worse, so.
So, I mean, how the state looks at our money is, it would be the equivalent of the day you got paid, that would be the date the state thinks of how much money you have, not the day after you pay all your bills. And so the state looks at us as being one of the largest school districts, sees how much money we have in, but they do not count all our bills when they look at that number. And so that's the difference between the high and low watermark. I think that, you know, it's something that we're going to have to wait and see how it happens. Obviously, the elected representatives out of Chicago have a particular take on this, and they have a lot of sway. Chicago's the only school district in the state, if I'm correct, that currently pays that portion, so they very much are of the opinion that the rest of the state should do the same, and their voting block is obviously powerful, so that's kind of how we ended up in this situation.
Two additional comments, Member Goojus. One, it makes a good soundbite when Chicago can say, well, we pay our share of teachers' pensions, why shouldn't the rest of the state pick up its share, the suburban school districts and the downstate school districts? I'm led to believe that when Chicago Public Schools agreed to take on their pension, they also were granted a ability to tax for that liability, if you will. So they forget to mention that when they put that soundbite out. The second item worth mentioning is the fact that when the state says, here's the amount of money that's going to go toward public education, the city of Chicago gets an unfair percentage based on a per-head count versus the rest of the state. And so if that was a more equitable distribution of the money the state puts out there, I think you'd have a little more support, maybe legislatively, but to see the state maybe skim off, let's just say, 30 percent when they only represent 20 percent of the student enrollment, you have to ask, well, why are they getting an extra 10 percent, and yet we're being asked to pick up the pension pushback? So again, those two pieces are never mentioned when that soundbite is put out there.
The reality is, the state's got a huge pension problem, and this is just a part of their puzzle, and they're trying to solve their puzzle, and we understand that, but we just assume that they wouldn't do it locally on our backs, so. Moving down the agenda, consent agenda items.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask the Board to approve Consent Agenda Items 6-1 through 6-5. 6-1, Board Meeting Minutes, July 16, 2012. 6-2, Executive Session Meeting Minutes. 6-3, Gifts for the STEP Program. 6-4, Student Activity Contracts for Jonas Elementary, for Interstate Studio, and John J. Lucansec for Savory Foods. And 6-5, Resolution 1324, Intergovernmental Agreement with Bolingbrook Park District to Provide After-School Care for STEP.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Pillars of Valley View.
Thank you. First, from the Food Department, the presenter will be Director of Food Services, Megan Gibbons.
Good evening, distinguished Board members, senior leadership, community members. Tonight, on behalf of the Nutrition Services Department, it's a hard name to catch, everyone gets it wrong, Nutrition Services Department, we'd like to nominate Mary Zehauer. Come on up, Mary, who is our kitchen manager at Hermanson Elementary School. Mary has been a Nutrition Services Kitchen Manager for four years now, leading her kitchen with an extremely positive attitude and incredible customer service skills. Of her own creation, Mary successfully invited, planned, and implemented a day at K L H where parents were invited to have lunch with their son or daughter, and she had a wonderful response. Over 150 parents came and ate lunch with their children that day. Her positive attitude and energetic go-get-'em energy make it very pleasing for me to present Mary as a pillar of Valley View tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have from Human Resources, Presenting Executive Director Sharon Hawkes.
Good evening, Board members, community. This evening, I'd like to introduce you to Brandy McCurry. Brandy is the Administrative Assistant for Human Resources for the Valley View School District. She's a prime example of a true professional. Her knowledge and experience within the district, the community, and human resources is a real asset. Brandy started her career while she was still in high school at Romeo-Ville High as a student worker through the co-op education program. Upon graduating from Romeo-Ville High School, she was hired as a Professional Secretary in the Buildings and Operations Department. In addition, Brandy has also worked in many other departments within the district such as the Curriculum Department, Superintendent's Office, and now in Human Resources. Brandy takes her responsibilities very seriously. She's committed and dedicated to supporting employees as they prepare our students to reach their full potential. Brandy willingly puts in many hours above her normal 40-hour work week. She acts with integrity, she's kind, compassionate, and patient when dealing with all stakeholders. Brandy is always willing to help others by going out of her way to find answers to their questions. She cares about this district, the students, and the staff, and takes pride in their achievements. She's a great support to me and also my right hand. I'm honored and excited this evening to present to you Brandy McCurry, a pillar of Valley View.
Next, from the Technology Department, presenting the Director of Instructional Technology, Don Tofano. As well as Astrid Welch.
And actually, Astrid's going to start this afternoon.
Distinguished Board Members, Dr. Mitchum, Senior Administration, members of the community, Donna and myself were tasked to select the technology nominee for a pillar of Valley View. We are fortunate to have a very committed and talented group of employees that make up our Technology Department, so the decision was not an easy one. As we reviewed the attributes of the Valley View pillars, rigor, instruction, assessment, accountability, and beliefs, we felt that these could equally apply to the work that the technology team members complete each and every day. We felt a technology pillar would be a staff member who provides technical rigor to their job each day, one who is able to instruct either a coworker, staff member, or vendor to use technology effectively, implement a product, or solve a technical problem, one who can assess a situation correctly and find an effective, efficient solution in a short amount of time, someone who feels and acts as if they are accountable for the quality and quantity of work they produce, and lastly, someone who believes in the educational mission of this district and who is committed to its success. We believe the person who best exemplifies this is Joe Bartolome, Technology Department Network Analyst.
He's going to get a double applause tonight. Joe joined the department in October of 2008 and had a positive impact on our team from day one. His primary responsibilities for the district have been in the areas of disaster recovery, mobile telecommunications, implementation and management of the district's internal wireless network, and end-user support. Joe and his wife, of 21 years, Harv Vat, have lived in Bolingbrook for 20 years. Their daughter, Jessica, is currently a senior at Bolingbrook High School, and their son, Jonathan, is a junior at BHS. They've attended Valley View schools for their entire academic careers. Joe, we are very grateful to have you as a member of our technology team. Thank you for your continued level of commitment to the stakeholders' educational mission and ultimately the success of Valley View School District. Members of the Board of Education, Senior Administration, it's our pleasure to bring you our pillar of Valley View, Joe Bartolome. Thank you.
And finally, from the Transportation Department, the Director of Transportation, Lucy Harding.
Good evening, Board members and community. It is my pleasure to present to you Mrs. Gloria Gonzalez, school bus driver extraordinaire. Gloria, excuse me, Gloria and her husband are 35-year residents. Her husband, Roy, are 35-year residents of Romeo-Ville. They are blessed with five children and 11 grandchildren. Their five children all were students of the Valley View School District and graduated from Romeo-Ville High School. Two of our grandchildren have attended Romeo-Ville High School, one of whom is now on the educational path to be an anesthesiologist. Gloria is a faithful, hard-working employee in the Transportation Department. She is number one on the seniority list with 27 years, eight months, and 12 days of service. She told me that. 16 of those years, she's been training an untold amount of new bus drivers, and she has been both a role model and mentor to numerous fellow employees. She is gentle and caring with her students. Added to this list of accomplishments, Gloria has maintained perfect attendance for 20 of those 27 years. Gloria credits her- Gloria credits her safe-driving mindset to driver-retiree Donna Bolombak, who was her mentor. Those words of praise are small in comparison to her safety record with our department. It is phenomenal. No at-fault accidents in 27-plus years of traveling approximately 1.2 million miles, driving an estimated 1,275,750 students safely. We applaud Gloria's contribution to the district for maintaining that safety record and recognize her here tonight for her deliberateness in making sure all of the district's students in her care get to and from school safely.
They should put you in a car commercial, 1.2 million miles. Fortunately, it wasn't on the same bus. Moving down the agenda, Liaison Reports. Any and all, please. Audience participation, anybody who would wish to present their views to the Board this evening. If you do, please step forward and state your name. Superintendent Action Reports.
Mr. President, no report tonight.
Assistant Superintendents Action Reports.
No report. No report as well.
Mr. Gazafi, Tentative Budget for the next budget year.
Yes, let me review some of the changes or pertinent facts of our budget for 2012-13. Our overall budget spending plan, 273.8 million dollars, certainly the largest it's ever been. Our operational funds, those funds that account for the day-to-day operations, 241.5 million dollars. That's an increase of about 5.1 million dollars, or 6.1 percent. That amount of money does not include the 15 million dollars in one-time working cash abatement to affect the full-day kindergarten build-out, and so that's included in the 273, but not the 241. That 5.1 million dollars in growth from the prior year's actual is accounted for thusly, $2 million in salary adjustments incorporated into the overall budget, $1 million in additional salary for the full-day kindergarten teachers that were hired to accommodate the increase in our attendance for our smallest children. 1.4 million dollars in benefits, benefits cost increase for our medical and our ex-claim costs over the next 12 months. On the revenue side, 79 percent of our revenue comes locally. That's property taxes, as well as fees, and corporate personal property replacement tax. That totals 177.4 million dollars. The state pony's up, 64 million dollars, but if we back out the on-behalf payment, which is a book entry only, they are contributing 36 and a half million to our 200 million plus in revenue, or 16 percent. And so very often you'll hear us address the state funding issue for Valley View that amounts to what I would declare inadequate, 16 percent of our overall revenue. On the federal side, 10.2 million dollars, or 5 percent, and so that has decreased from prior years when we had the ARAMoney that has since been diminished, there's no more ARAMoney. Even without that, it's a decrease of over a million dollars from the prior years. Getting back to the state side, general state aid, which is the largest portion of our revenue from the state, the governor declared no increase in the foundation level, as well as a proration of general state aid of 89 percent. That amounts to a decrease of 1.7 million dollars for our new fiscal year. Over the last five years, we have bore the brunt of an 8.8 million dollar decrease in general state aid over the last five years, and that's revenue that cannot be made up anywhere, anyplace. On the transportation revenue side, again, regular transportation reimbursement continues to be prorated by 42 percent, a decrease of 1.2 million dollars. Along with the delay in funding, we continue to struggle in our transportation side of the budget. From a fund balance perspective, we are projected to be at a 62 million dollar mark, giving us 98 days of operational reserves for just over three months on June 30. And we talked about the high watermark, that is the high watermark. We'll talk a little bit about the low watermark here in a second. If the state were to catch up with its $4 million of IOU, if you will, our fund balance would grow to 66 million projected, or about 105 days of operating reserves. Our deficit will decrease to approximately $5 million in 2013-14. That's an operational deficit, not a fund balance deficit, and our projections indicate that our budget should be balanced in 2014-15. So we are headed in the right direction financially. We are looking to address our structural deficit, which we do show in our projections, and that chart was included in the information that I sent you, and so, again, I think regardless of the large deficit we have for this year, operational deficit, using fund reserves to balance our budget, we are indeed headed in the right direction. We have targeted our low-point balance to not dip below 30 days of reserves, or 18 million dollars on May 30, and that's, again, the point in time, if you will, where we need to continually monitor our reserves the day before payday, if you will, to make sure we can pay our bills, pay our staff, pay our vendors, and keep the lights on, so to speak. Couple other additional notes, we haven't factored any of the changes to the collective bargain agreement into this contract, and so while we do have a salary allocation in there, any of the other changes that could come out of a collective bargaining agreement have not been, again, incorporated into this budget. Did not want to make that assumption that that would indeed occur. Just to give you an idea of how fluid our budget is, on Friday, after this was posted, the corporate personal property replacement taxes were posted by the Department of Revenue, and unfortunately, we are to receive 1.3 million dollars less. And that information was not out on Thursday, it only came out on Friday, and through no fault of anybody here, through no fault, or through nothing that we have control over, we are going to receive 1.3 million dollars less in our corporate personal property. We were at about 8.8 million dollars last year, we're going to be at about 7.5 for next year. And so, again, the revenue side of the equation just continues to get hammered every time you turn around, not to mention the pension pushback that Member Vinegas brought up, also not incorporated in this budget because we just don't know what that impact might be. So all things totaled, we have a balanced budget using our reserves to balance, we are headed in the right direction. I am asking that this tentative budget be put on display for public inspection for at least 30 days, and a public hearing will be convened at the September 24 meeting where a final budget adoption will be recommended. During that 30 days, we'll continue to fine-tune the budget. Hopefully, we will have a collective bargaining ratification with our largest labor group where we could then incorporate any changes from that into our budget to give- where we could then incorporate any changes from that into our budget to give us a better sense of exactly where we're going to be. But again, as I've said time and again, this is a point-in-time budget. It changes daily. And so, again, we try to incorporate everything that we know to date within the spending plan to give us a best guess of where we're headed, where we're going to end, and make sure we're not going down a path that we're not able to afford.
On the CPPRT, Corporate Personal Property Replacement Tax, is that money due to reduced revenues on the state's side, or is that because they raided the fund?
No, it's not because they raided the fund. That raid that you referred to to pay the regional superintendents was a very small piece of that. I don't know if that's been passed for this year, although they've talked about it, but that would be due to the reduced receipts in the corporate personal property replacement tax.
Because I know they stuck that out there again last year.
Right.
And it was like $5.5 million.
Across the state, I think our share was about $80,000. Right. Correct.
Okay. So, this year, we really got a hit.
Yeah, very hard.
Any other questions, Mr. Gersafi, on the tentative budget? Moving down the agenda.
I do need action, President Quigley, on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Action report. That was an action report, yes. We need a motion to approve the action report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagis?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
And President Quigley?
Yes. Ms. Hawkes?
Thank you, President Quigley. This evening, Action Report 13.1, Consolidated Action Report for Certified and Classified Personnel. We're seeking your approval on 115 items for certified, 61 for classified, four items for classified administrative, and seven items for certified administrative personnel.
So moved. Second.
Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagis?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Before I move on to my next action report, I would like to make notice that in the Consolidated Action Report, which was just approved, we did hire three administrators there. I would like for them, as I call their name, to stand. I believe one of them may not be here tonight. Karen Florries, if you'd stand, she's going to be our new 612 Director of Literacy and Social Studies. Jessica Eamon, she is the Core Content Administrator for Mathematics at Romeoville High School. And our third one is Jill Hollander. I don't believe she's here this evening. She's the Core Content Administrator for Literacy at Bolingbrook High School. Welcome to all of them. And for my next action report, number 13.2, this is Resolution Number 1325, authorizing dismissal of educational support personnel employee for reasons other than reduction enforced.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion on that item? Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagis?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Next, Legal Services Report, Mr. Alpern.
Information report on job description.
Oh, I'm sorry. Information, that's Ms. Hawkes. I thought we were done.
This evening, information report, we were just giving you a written report and a new job description that we are recommending. As you know, job descriptions are very critical documents that are maintained. They serve for recruitment, evaluation, and compensation and benefit functions. We recently created the Core Content Administrator positions at the high school level to support effective instructional practices in the content areas of literacy and math. And so, this evening, just for your review, is the Core Content Administrator job description, and we will be bringing it back to the August 27 Board Meeting for your approval.
Thank you. Mr. Alpern?
No report this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
AFT Reports?
No report.
Thank you. Valley View Council?
No report.
Valley View Office Personnel Council? Apparently, no report. Any old business before the board this evening? Any new business before the board this evening? Any questions from the public on issues we've taken up this evening? Any questions from the public? Same thing. Any announcements by the board?
I actually have an announcement. I wanted just to congratulate the entire group that worked on our summer learning experience. I know that I was working very close with Ms. Liz Hornbeck at our elementary school, and I'm going to tell you, folks, that was an exceptional program. My son, who's going into kindergarten, is four years old, going on five, and my daughter, both of them, just really enjoyed it. I know that Ms. Ricketts, Ms. Blash, Ms. Davis, Ms. Els, and I believe it's Loschider, all those four folks, I got to meet, interact with them. It was phenomenal. So, I hope that we can continue growing that program, and it continues growing for next summer. Congratulations to Jason on the birth of his baby. I believe that's
Passkevich.
Passkevich. And also for being the director of the program, because I know that he put in a lot of time in there. So, just want to throw those notes in there. Thank you again.
Yeah, definitely want to follow up on that. Thanks. I think the summer learning experience went out without a hitch. I also want to thank all the community members. We have a larger number of community members that are here today. I want to thank you guys for coming out and showing your support. There are so many good things going on with registration in school coming back in, so I want to thank all the teachers and the PTOs and Parent Teacher Associations that are volunteering, even as we speak right now during registration across the district. Thank you for all your hard work on that.
Anyone else? Real briefly, I wanted to say congratulations to the Girl Scout troops from both Bolingbrook, Romeoville, and throughout the region that assembled at the Bolingbrook Village Hall Friday and Saturday nights for a big Girl Scout Cambrai, or whatever they call it. And there was probably 250 girls there, and anywhere from ages from probably five-and-a-half, six, all the way up to 14, 15. And I told the moms, they probably had the best night of camping weather that you could have in the last all summer. They were very happy to not have to be out there when it was 95 degrees. But they had a very nice event and look forward to growing their numbers next year, and scouting for Girl Scouts in particular, and I'm sure Boy Scouts in our area is alive and well. So, congratulations to all those that were involved in that endeavor. Any announcements by the administration?
I'd just like to thank all of the teachers, support staff, and all of those people who are closest to the kids in the classroom. They are the ones who truly make a difference, and as a result of their hard work and effort, our district is in a better place today than it was yesterday, and is in a better place this year than it was last year. And although we make policy decisions and procedural decisions up here, everything must be implemented in the classroom. Without effective teachers in the classroom, nothing that gets done will work. So, I just wanted to thank those teachers in the classroom, as well as their aides, instructional aides, food service workers, everyone who works directly with the kids every day. Thank you for your hard work, and it will pay off in the future as it has, Curran.
Any announcements by the public? Hearing none, seeing none. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Ayes have it. We stand adjourned, have a safe and fun rest of your summer.